The last city council meeting of the year. I'd ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Zach. Please call and roll, Judge, when you're ready.
Aldag.
Here.
Griffin.
Here.
Hubbard.
Here.
Michelle's.
Schlaf.
Absent.
Semi Pharaoh.
Kyo.
Here.
Bruterly.
Here.
Heeding. Absent. Malik. Absent.
Thank you. Item C this evening is approval of the meeting minutes from our city council meeting on December 11th, 2023. Is there someone that wants to make a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Griffin, thank you.
My second.
Second by Aldag, thank you. Jamie, any comments?
I had two.
Okay.
The first one definitely went on page eight, just under my council comments. I didn't actually say when I helped out with the blowjob, I just got losing. So I can be modified. And then actually a resident reached out to me on page five, it was somewhere in there, on our discussion of the Sloan Kingsley. Update, I think is what that's called there. Somewhere in there, they were hoping to see, I think it was, Semi Pharaoh made the comment, that the connection to the existing water sewer infrastructure is one of the benefits to the developers. So this writer reached out and said, as a taxpayer, that was kind of the most interesting, I wasn't going to do details that came up during that conversation, so I don't know if there's a bullet. One, two, three, four, five, or you add your own, but he says one of the benefits of the project, proposal, anything for the city. The comment was made that, you know, a benefit to the developers, the ability to connect to the existing water and sewer infrastructure. I did see that anywhere.
That sounds good, so that's right there in the middle part of the bullets under. Right, under five, page five? Thank you for those. Um, so now. Zach, Joe, anybody comments on me? Okay. Please call the vote to approve the meeting minutes with those changes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh.
Yes.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Aldag.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yeah.
Kyo.
Yes. Thank you, the minutes are approved, we have no prearranged participation this evening. So we're down to non-arranged participation. This is the first of two spots on the agenda for residents or people in the audience to speak should they want to. If you should choose to do so, we ask that you raise your hand and we'll call on you, then state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening? No one present? Okay, we'll ask the same question online. Is there anyone online that would like to speak this evening? If so, please raise your hand or use the raise a hand feature. I don't see any hands come up, and I can check behind me now. So we will keep moving, we're down to a declaration of conflicts of interest, are there any conflicts of interest to declare this evening? We can see ahead of time. Seeing none. We will jump over to page two of the agenda, where we have the approval of the agenda. What's it like?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by Aldag, thank you.
Second.
Second by Semi Pharaoh, thank you, Joe. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Aldag.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yeah.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh.
Yes.
Kyo.
Yes. Thank you, motion carries, we have no public hearings this evening. So we're down to communications, there was one communication in the packet on page nine. Our upcoming meeting list, are there any comments on the meeting list? Hey, no comments on the meeting list at this time. Uh, we are down to our first report from our Public Services Superintendent. Tim Stewart.
How's everybody's Christmas session, it's like?
Very good, yours?
Good. Long drive, but it was good. So, for the most part, so. Um, it's too important. Lady meeting, questions answered. Answered questions.
I have one question for you. I saw, I think it was in the last email update, that we're all done picking up leaves. So if people have raked them in their, into the street, do we put notices on their door to let them know they have to bag them, or how do we confer to them that?
Yeah, so I've gone through them a couple of plates and explained to them what's going on, and they could bag them, and then at certain days they come back, they can.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if I've gotten every single one, I did see an extra one today. So that I'll get, notify the person on it.
Okay, gotcha, I just was, I was hoping there was one, some way of communicating it to them.
Yeah.
Cause it.
So it, I mean, you know, one was off of, uh.
They haven't been there that long, it's all.
No, and actually I caught one gentleman doing it at the time, I literally, I said, just so you don't go any further, he's like, man, I knew I should have done it. So I told him, I said, just bag it up and combine it together.
And then, second question for you. Um, over on, um, I don't know if it's Second Street or Cushion Court, where that transitions exactly, but is that one of the lead service line replacements?
No, that was a sewer line.
That's a sewer line.
Yeah, she's had a problem with it for years, I guess, supposedly, and then there was a big tree that got taken down.
Okay.
And they were taking it out up to this morning, and in fact, they called me on the way over here, I told them, call me when they were done.
It's, okay.
So he's got everything, um, not back completely, but everything, a barricade off that should be in the back there firstly in the morning, so.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Those are my only two questions, anybody else? Laura, still yours?
Um, not much, we got a new backup, it's gonna be showing up here tomorrow, or about today, tomorrow or Friday. Uh. That's about it. That's holidays, it's just everything's short.
Have the two new employees started? They have.
Yeah, they started a couple of weeks ago.
How are they doing?
Um, very good, so in fact, we just got, I got phone last week with the CDL people, so we're gonna shoot for mid to end of January to try to get everybody up to par with the rest of the CDL stuff.
Gotcha.
But, uh, it's gonna be, and I, the gentleman from the CDL, he's from the other side of the state Niles, and I did find out that it's gonna be actually a lot cheaper because he, because he has the brick and mortar type deal and business, he can travel. So he's gonna be able to come here. So I'm starting.
Good.
Very good.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate you being here. Uh, next up is our Community Development Manager. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, happy holidays, everyone, are we ready for New Year's? Okay, okay, still a little Christmas kind of fog, so, all right, before I go into updates, you have my report, please let me know what questions you've got.
Jamie.
Yeah, I was interested in the market study summary that you shared, I think that's on page thirteen of the packet. You mentioned that, and I don't know if you share on page sixteen of the copy, but that was like a summary. So I don't know if you're able to share generally a bit about the company, you prepare that, and then if you have, I mean, demographics to make about how the DDA received that information, or if it was considered in any detail at that meeting.
So the, at the November meeting, Sharon Woods, who is the principal at Land Use USA, presented all of the different, uh, studies, the uh, the residential, the real estate, the demographic, the economic. And she did it in the full, um, it had all the raw data, and then she had her written executive summaries. Um, and they were, um, it, it's an exhaustive amount of data, and a very exhaustive and detailed summary. The DDA needed for it to be encapsulated in more digestible bits of information, and so they asked her to bullet point, which is what you've got in front of you. They will see that at their, um, something, something at the December meeting, cause it came in after that, it'll go to your January meeting. Excuse me, um, but this sort of encapsulates the, um, um, the key projections, the key findings that are associated with all that data that she collected. And if you have a chance to look at any of the full reports, when I say exhaustive, I mean, there.
It's four hundred pages total.
Oh, yeah, it's huge, but to your first question, um, Land Use USA is the, um, is the, um, partner organization that CIB Planning partnered with for our strategic plan update. Ms. Woods is also the person who did our target market analysis, when we did that with Chelsea, Saline, and Ypsilanti back in twenty fifteen. Um, her area of expertise is studying the markets, understanding demographics, understanding and being able to evaluate the different trends based on just unbelievable amounts of data that are collected. For many, 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 many years, she did, um, um, real estate and retail market analyses for, um, topmen companies, and, um, she also did work with, um, OpGives, who, that may know him, others may not, but, uh, he is an expert in downtown development, redevelopment, urban design, et cetera. But that's what, that's what all of this is, and, and why you have it in the more digestible format.
So I get, I was struck by the detail in the draft.
Oh, yeah.
Thirty detached houses every over the next five years, any just. It, yeah, I guess it's for the get a sense of, and now I think there's a form of change behind it, the.
They're conservative.
I've been saying, um, the, that's a part of the strategy.
Yes. Yes, um, uh, she is, she has told us that she's happy to speak with any member of the DDA, planning commission, city council, if you want to take that deeper dive with her on this, she's happy to have that conversation, and, um, that's kind of something that I know is your, is something you're, um, experienced in and have interest in, so I would suspect that you and her have a very good um, so if that's something you'd like, please just let me know, um. Understand her projections are based on all the data, but they're going to be very conservative. So, um, like you said, Jamie, it had, there was one that talks about, um, thirty new detached homes or large cottages. That doesn't mean that if a development comes in, you should only allow it to have thirty. When it could have, maybe it could have a hundred. She's looking at it very conservatively from what she assesses the market and, um, um, absorb her, to be sold.
Why didn't, why didn't they look at housing?
Um, because within the DDA, um, there are properties that are master planned and have been strategically planned by the DDA for future redevelopment. Um, uh, and that redevelopment does include housing, whether that's single family detached, duplexes, triplexes, quads, high, it, it looks for more high density. They wanted to have a really good understanding of what that market looked like now in town.
Is there a connection between the housing in the retail commercial? I mean, is there a time there, like, you know, they talk about how much additional square footage you could have in the downtown that it might support? Does that go along with the additional housing, or is it sort of the other way that you need the housing to support the downtown?
So. Yes and no, the, the snapshot in time on the retail studies, um, uh, is what you currently have versus what you could have based on your, um, your market, the trade area. Any additional housing that you would bring into the city supports that, and over time, um, five, ten years from now, you'll relook at that, and your projections for what you have in town versus what you couldn't, could have in town, get tweaked to them. It's an ongoing sort of living process, if you will, does that make sense?
Yeah. Does the housing, did they consider the things that are already approved or are projected to be built or as far as housing goes?
Um, she does know what's currently in the hopper, uh, versus what we master planned and what are, um, uh, what are zoning currently allowed.
Good. Zach?
A couple of follow-on comments, I, I'm suggesting that the language be revised a little bit. In some of these, it reads as if the city faster controls the needs of production, and we are building thirty detached houses. I, I don't think we have the building to do that, or the seller to do that, um, a couple of places experiment, and then work so well. Uh, I just, for scale. For scale, when you add up all new units, that's possible over the five-year period, it's just on the order of six hundred, probably. By way of comparison, the last, that's the annual census, the world one thousand eight hundred and eight households in the city of Dexter. This calls for increasing the number of households by a factor of by about thirty, by thirty-three percent. When you do the total for rental housing, four hundred and twenty-five minutes over the five years then, the early, the recaps. Um, I, I don't know that these are very realistic, um, similar to the language, I think it was recognized that we don't control programming or use side of metal, for example. Here it seems, and, and I know it's a, a common thing that folks say, we want to have this type of store, this type of store, and, and we, since we don't own the property, we can't control that.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, I can go into my updates if you don't mind.
Zach?
One more question on that, and any update on the St. Joseph lights?
Uh, yes, if we can have Grace time in real quick.
Sure. Is she unmuted?
Directly with Father Brendan.
Sorry, I was just trying to unmute myself, can everybody hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so I went out to the property, um, and met with the person who does maintenance, um, and he let me know that originally they had replaced the lights with all LED bulbs, and that's why they were like that really glowy blue, uh, shade that was, it was really, really bright, and the, uh, temperature was, was not right. Um, so they've since changed the bulbs back to, they're still an LED bulb, but it's closer to the original color temperature, um, that was previously there, and they've also added shades to the um, lights that are pointing up towards the steeple, so it shouldn't, um, cause as much trespass, but that's more than what they had previously. Also, they showed me the not necessarily streetlights, but they're adjacent to the walkways, um, by the church are now, they've changed them to have like a motion sensor, so they're dimmed until someone walks by them. So they've adjusted the temperature and the settings for the light so that they're not, um, they shouldn't be as bright or as, um, not good of a color temperature, if that makes sense.
And, and it's the angle also adjusted so that it's, it's all downlit. I've looked posted in the past couple of weeks.
So the lights are downlit, but not the ones that are pointed up at the steeple, but they have had those previously, the issue was that they changed the bulb, they haven't changed any of the actual light fixtures. Um, what changed that was causing the issue was the bulbs being changed, and they've since changed those to the other, um, less intense bulbs.
Which, which lights are we talking about? Specifically at St. Joseph's?
Other
I mean, I know the one.
Street lights that are on the Dover side of the church, by the sidewalk, they shine down on the sidewalk, and there's some on that that like also shines a little bit onto the, on street parking areas.
Okay.
But there's a number of them, those have existed for decades, as far as I know, but like Grace said, they retrofitted the bulb, so they took out the incandescent or halogen, whatever that style was, retrofitted it with LED, and then Zach has pointed out to us before, if you don't um, ensure that the temperature, um, doesn't go above thirty-five hundred Kelvins, you get this really intense lighting, so that's what they've taken.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so moving along, um, uh, I hope that you enjoyed that economic development article, the, the, looking at, uh, quality bill versus incentive bill, and, and how that, how that economic development, um, in practice, um, is either a Thanksgiving turkey meal, or the whole Christmas holiday, uh, kind of approach. Um, I think it's safe to say that, um, in Dexter, we sort of embrace that Christmas approach, um, and there are so many examples of that, um, uh, which is why we're such a in-demand community, if you will, and I hope that's something that we continue to, um, build upon. Um, as an update to the planning, uh, for outside the current boundaries, there's some information I provided you to kind of give you an understanding of how we got to the policy that's currently in the master plan. Um, and, um, ultimately, if, if council would like it to be tweaked, massaged, revisited, we can, we can do that. Um, and we can apply for a grant through Misha to actually help us do that. Um, this was just recently announced, called the Housing Ready Netness Incentive Program. Um, it's to implement actions that encourage increasing housing supply and affordability. Maximum grants fifty thousand, it does not require a match with all grants. Whenever you do give some sort of match, that's a little bit better in your favor. Eligible activities, uh, include costs associated with things like the adoption of land use policies, master plan updates, zoning text amendments, and other similar actions that would increase housing supply and affordability. And that would be the case whether you used in-house staff, or whether you hire a consultant. This, um, I hope you will agree with me when I say, I think this provides an opportunity for us to look at, um, not just the language regarding planning for outsider boundaries, but, excuse me, um, it kind of goes beyond just that, we may have some different visions and, uh, vision and goals for that. Um, we can utilize a grant to conduct the community, uh, community engagement workshops for the thirty forty-five Broad Street project. But any properties outside their boundary, not just Sloan Kingsley, um, and the Second Street corridor, that's one we've already talked about. But we've put, we've been thinking that we would put that off until twenty twenty-five, and deal with it when that regular update of the master plan is done. This grant opportunity gives us the opportunity to potentially move that up and, and utilize funding that we otherwise wouldn't have. Excuse me, the other thing that, um, uh, we could utilize the funding for would be to take the lessons we've learned recently through our PUD application process, um, especially for multiple family residential. And again, incorporate that into a master plan update, which would then turtle down to zoning ordinance. It, unless there's an objection, staff would like to, to work with our planning consultant, um, and to get this application in, um, the portal opens on January sixteenth, got nothing to lose by at least applying for it, unless there'd be objections to moving that amendment to the plan off a couple of, a year and a half, if we were to get it for. Think about it and let me know.
Okay.
Um.
How much work is involved in putting the application together?
I have not had a chance, the portal hasn't opened up to show me what that is, I've got some an outline that I think is based on the questions, it doesn't, it doesn't look like it is too cumbersome. Um, but one of the things that I think would be important to help staff is if we were to, um, ask Carlisle Wortman for a scope of, um, not for putting the grant application together, or to help with that, but a scope of work, or what we'd be applying for, that will go a long way to figuring out how well it, it, um, competes with others wanting to do the same thing. So that's something I thought, uh, again, unless there were some serious objections, I'd ask Carlisle Wortman for that scope and bring it to you in January, so you've got something to. Okay?
Thank you.
Um, couple last things, we have an internal meeting with Dan Whalen, um, it, it's got rescheduled to January tenth. That will happen before, an hour before, we actually have the meeting with Dan and the Sloan Kingsley developer, and it's all about looking at the, um, wow, well drilling and potential for municipal well out there, so. Um, and lastly, for those of you who have been on council, when some of our first student representatives started, um, pre-COVID, um, I, uh, Alex Gilbert, some of you will remember him. So he reached out to me, emailed today, we're actually gonna have breakfast tomorrow, so that I can catch up with him, and he can catch up with me on everything Dexter, so, um, we're having, um, breakfast tomorrow at Joan Rosie's at nothing, so anybody wanting to stop in to say hi, please feel free.
Very nice, very nice.
That's it.
Thank you for your update, and your good work, Michelle. Are there any board commissioner other reports that are needed under J three there? We do have bolded the Washington County Sheriff reports, it's in the packet, Zach?
Uh, the, the report, uh, the, yeah, the board, they approved this event plan for this next, this week starts January one, that will increase our contribution on the order of fifty dollars, sixty thousand dollars, don't know the exact number, it's, it's partially set up by one distribution, which doesn't get taught in the survey anybody. Um, that includes fifteen full-time fire crews, which do the math, which is only five on duty any time. The ultimate aim is to have six on duty at all times in each station. When you do the math, that, when that eventually is all ramped up, we'll have an extra hundred thousand dollars roughly, um, a year that we can figure to put that. That's it.
Thanks for sharing that. Okay, any comments on the sheriff report? See, that'll keep, oh, go ahead, Jamie, sorry.
I was, and I expect all of you were surprised, and I guess disturbed to learn that there was standing, uh, community details here were, I guess, somewhat smart, I did reject the lieutenant consciousness, there was a relationship between the victim and the offender. And there was, uh, there not to get fit, um. And so again, I was just curious to see if there was some, you know, uncontained threats to the community, and it seems like there's not.
Thank you. Yeah, I heard it was domestic as well. Not that that makes it any better or worse.
Right.
But, but. Yeah. See, no other comments, we'll move right along through, uh, J five, to manager report.
Yeah, so, so you have my written report, um, so anybody have any questions? I don't really have many verbal updates other than happy holidays.
Um, do you want to give an update on our? Um do you want to give an update on our meeting with the schools? Uh yeah, do you want me to do that?
It's up to you. I I can do it.
Okay.
Um thank you. Yeah, so so we we met um last week with uh Dr. Tim S and and Sharon Ratchey. And um they were talking through uh some of their um tentative. Concepts, the potential future plans, um they uh received more more information on. Kind of the timeline for them having to spend the dollars associated with the federal grant they got for. Um the community slash uh senior center. And um as of right now, it looks like they are contemplating um either. Uh construction of the purchase, the purchase of the wellness center and the construction of a new building on that same site. Or an addition uh to the wellness center and um. There's, there's going to be some hoops that they'll have to jump through, um assuming they they follow through with the purchase of the of the wellness center. Um in terms of um dissolving the umbrella that is the the kind of minim association. And then reconstituting one piece of it while not reconstituting it for the pieces that they own. Um and then they're also looking at um. Uh at um some other other facility concepts, um they had. Uh talked with the owner of Noble Appliance, um apparently they're they're looking for a location for some additional. Um educational um opportunities, so like um. Co-op slash like on the on the job training uh facility for for uh to put students in touch with with um businesses. And. The there was one of the pieces of it. What's escaping me right now?
They called it um. The Blue House.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, so well, so they're 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 looking at at um selling one of the houses that that they currently own um near uh Baker and Dan Hawkins.
Yeah, so just to elaborate a little bit on those, and the last one, if you can picture the roundabout at Dan Hoy and Baker. There's a blue house right on the corner, they own it for a long time, there were people that lived there, those people got. Moved out, it was used as a um an office, I think, for the construction management company doing work. For the schools, they would like to sell that property, but it's for whatever reason is no longer zoned. Residential, that was their, so their key question was to Michelle, if we wanted it to be residential, how do we get it back to residential? Michelle, Michelle's gonna work that up and respond, we don't know the answer, we don't need the answer today, but that was the. That was the question that they posed to us about the Blue House. Back to the Wellness Center, uh as everybody knows, the schools were were given a huge windfall of a grant or. An opportunity, eight point five million, I think it was, eight million. Um interestingly enough, the Wellness Center that they're looking at purchasing uh is not. Big enough to do to to house the community or the senior center. So the thought is that they would either add on to that building to the south directly towards Bates. And there was an addition envisioned on that building back when the original building was built, I think that's shown on the site plan, it's subsized. But if they don't come south off of the existing building, they're they're talking with AR Brower about the um. Potential building that upfront building that's on Baker and that outlet that where the third building wasn't built. So there's an option A and an option B, and they're going through those things, but the biggest hurdle is that the. The original site was set up as a site condominium, they don't, the schools don't want to be in a site condominium. Or part of a condominium development, they want to own the land outright that they would then have, so they need to. Work with the people in the, they're the owners of the pharmacy. Um the old pharmacy building and uh. Either dissolve or delayer the the condominium such that they're separate and. There'd be some shared agreements for access drives and signs and detention and that kind of thing that have to be reset up and established. Formerly common areas, if you will, within the original one, but they they wanted to make us aware of some of the legal challenges that they're going through. Towards that. Zach.
The concern is having ownership of the land in a site condominium to have ownership. We also are a participant in their larger dealings, which they would still have to be in the care of maintenance of the comments.
Correct.
If their goal is ownership, we're gonna get there just following the steps that a bunch of my previous process.
Yeah, we weren't trying to convince them of what was right or wrong, they were just letting us know that's. They've had some discussions and that they're going to be approaching the. Owners of the pharmacy building condominium, if you will, about potentially breaking it apart. So. Jimmy.
Be recommending our one league role against the real estate transaction, just to see if like their potential tax base implication in that lot. That's under the schools, so that's no longer in the states, so I'm just curious who came up in that conversation, and I guess your school. Has everyone interested in that allot?
Not, not that I'm aware of, every time. And then, and then the last part of that is that they would, they were considering um connecting. The Bates parking lot to the Wellness Center parking lot within connection drive so that they could move across their campus a little bit. And they um they wanted to deter that, the road that comes down from uh.
Yeah, runs runs between.
Runs up the hill to Wiley. They would still have the road somewhere, but they want to, they don't want to make it as clear and access out to Baker, they wanted to make it more challenging for people to get through there. So just, I just wanted to make sure we were sharing what the conversation was. I had referenced the meeting in my last report and um. Anyway, you covered it well, so thank you. Any questions for Justin? Okay, I just wanted to um under my report, wish everybody a happy new year. Hard to believe it's going to be twenty twenty four next week. Hope it starts off with the Michigan victory on January one, uh which means that January second and the eighth would be a very short meeting. Uh but uh no, looking forward on more serious things related to the city, um I did throw out a few dates for goal setting. Um picked a couple Saturdays in February, a couple in March, just to throw them out there, I've waited Saint Patrick's Day weekend. Um but other than that, there wasn't much logic to the dates, so if everybody could just think about those and. I'll ask again in January, but I'd like to get that set uh in early January, so we can run everybody's calendar. Any questions for me on any? Okay, we have people waiting in the audience and one of them I know has an early plane flight in the morning. So we'll keep moving through the agenda, we are down to, well, first of all, there are any council member reports under J seven, let's flip the page. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda where there are two items.
Um I'll move through the two items on the consent agenda, build a payroll. You just hold on, build a payroll in the amount of three hundred forty thousand five hundred fifty three dollars and eighteen cents and resolution of many. Policy for board and commission compensation.
Moved by Hubbard, thank you all. Second, second by Simon Pharaoh, thank you, Joe. Senator, please call the vote to approve the two items on the consent agenda.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Semi Faro?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you, we have no unfinished business, uh two new business items this. Meeting, M one is consideration of public safety facilities at the sheriff's office location. And I believe there is a motion, suggested motion, right, on page forty five and. Make motion that we designate. The permanent placement of the sheriff's office facilities as thirty five fifteen Broad Street as part of the public safety facilities project. Okay, moved by Simon Pharaoh. Is there a second? Second by Aldag, thank you both. Okay, discussion. Questions? Zach?
Doesn't seem to me that the budget includes the ability that we found in the plans.
That is correct, so the the the. The 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 concept um that was provided in the packet is the the first concept that we've seen. Um and um we it we we haven't really had a chance to to flush that out yet. Um so. Even even between um myself and David and the sheriff's office, I don't think we've had a chance to really sit down and. Kind of go through kind of room by room, kind of what's what that might look like, um so. Um but I I think to to your 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 last um statement. Per David, um the building code apparently does does not require the elevator.
It's, I, that is fully read, there are only specific types of uses. For police, fire, military that are accepted having E D A, and this plan, it doesn't catch those.
So I I think the idea is that anything that is.
I I I, you can get it out.
Yeah, so so I I think I think the idea is that a- a- anything that that's intended to be um available to the public.
No, it doesn't say available, well.
So. If the council wants to wants to get into that, I would let David uh. Okay, for what by that.
Welcome, David.
Welcome, Merry Christmas, everyone, it's great to be here tonight. Um I didn't hear the whole question or say that uh exactly, but the essence of it is an elevator required or not. And it's uh maybe some of the wording he says isn't there, but it doesn't say that it's required in. General um consensus in the industry uh for essential service police fires not required. For areas that are for the firefighters or for the police staff. The design of the space uh as it separates first from second puts the officer space on the second floor. So there would be no need for the public to go there. Um a a fallback to that is space is less than three thousand square feet in a second or non-accessible story doesn't require an elevator. Oh, that space meets that criteria also, so. If you wanted to kind of say the essential services pieces gray, uh the code is not gray on less than three thousand square feet, doesn't require an elevator.
Uh this is exactly uh machine building or point fifteen, one one oh fifty points, two points, one five, alter directions of police facilities. Housing, bathing, toilet, training, and storage areas. Intended for use and occupancy exclusively by wired service or security personnel required to physically have no amount of party accessible. Office space is not housing, bathing, toilet, train, or shortage.
So the doesn't say not offices, but the latter part of your statement is what's up there. It's the showering locker rooms, uh their their break room. And their functioning space as officers. Or public interaction, the only place public would go in the station would be. In the interview room or the front desk interaction to make a report, which is all first. But i- i- if this is a question, let's let us kind of go through that and maybe there's a more definitive way to. Say it's not required versus the conversation we have here.
Yeah, I I guess my my vision, my vision is that long term that there's an elevator there, if it's not required early. I'm okay with that starting off, but I I think we should plan for it in whatever the layout is. That we're coming up with, because I I it may not always be a sheriff station.
Correct.
And I don't, I I'd like to just think about that ahead of time. I I try, I I trust, I trust you to read the code for us.
Uh I certainly will have a, you know, support team that's more expertise in that than myself, so. I I also rely on more than just our our office architects, we have consultants that we work with for that. Um the plan that we laid out, placement of the elevator is such that you could do it later. But it's appropriate for the function of the sheriff in that. You don't have to traverse their first floor space to get to it if you're needing to get to it. Like we did look at a north side location and a south side.
Okay, so what what is your, what estimate are we carrying for the cost of this?
What do you mean?
And I know there's a broader estimate that's out there, but if you could just, since we're talking about sheriff.
So in in your packet, um there was the initial allowance. Uh that was carried for temporary accommodation from fire department as well as the permanent departments at the allowance prior to seeing. So the temporary requirements for fire department were five thousand dollars. Then there was an allowance for forty thousand dollars, we converted that to permanent, that was prior to seeing the design and share.
Okay, pri- prior to this.
Right, so since that time, uh Thursday, Thursday before noon. Revised budget for that, uh for that accommodation to us. That is revised standpoint. That forty thousand dollars uh to accommodate everything, not including the elevator. Convert and upgrade from temporary conditions still at one forty five, permanent conditions for the. Sheriff substation ninety thousand dollars.
Okay.
So forty five changes today.
Okay, thank you.
So in the packet, there is a. Economic evaluation, but um in bill cost from the. August pricing of the sheriff substation included. The permanent uh fleet or, excuse me, permanent fire station location, uh and the allocation value of that. Three hundred and forty nine thousand dollars, being compared to the economic expense. Needs placed here to upgrade the temporary fire station, the permanent police. Uh at ninety five thousand dollars, and so it's a it's a delta of uh just over two hundred thousand. Based on current.
All right, so let me, let me, so.
I pulled it out, spending lots of money. You mean the sheriff's substation. Now, when you get it, part of trying to accommodate uh the programmatic needs.
Okay, and and so just give me the sum total on what we'd spend to renovate temporarily. And then permanent over here, it's one forty five plus ninety?
One forty five plus ninety five.
Uh plus ninety five, okay, so two hundred and forty thousand, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Uh the elevator, we put together a budget on it. With the shaft uh foundations, mechanical like those foundations.
Thank you. Other questions associated with the decision? To put the sheriff here at City Hall, you remember, we had decided that we were gonna put it elsewhere other than eighty one forty, but. There really isn't another option than this one, right, and they seem to prefer the idea of being here. So this would just affirm that decision. Okay.
Just that quick comment that in multiple conversations, um that they were very. Excited about the possibility of of this location even over their current location, so. Um it was um great to hear that from Lieutenant Han.
Okay, any other questions on this topic? Senator, please call the vote to approve the motion made by someone Pharaoh seconded by Aldag.
Simon Pharaoh?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Michelle's?
So.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, we're down to new business item M two, which is discussion of public safety facilities, cost funding and alternatives. Which can now center back to the fire station.
You all have, um, received the package or update, um, the progress in the planning. So we, we work from our final concept design into the beginnings of schematics, which this represents portion of schematic design, taking the concept into a more construction-like document, moving into the development next. I'm not sure if you're gonna put it up here or should I just talk? My plan is though you're looking at one of your station. Either way, it's probably fine for me.
If Josh can, will put something on the screen is fine. Just, um, I'm assuming you have the same packet of information we do?
I do.
Okay. So what page would you like us to be on?
Um, the site plan, which is right after the cover sheet.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll be brief. And if there's any questions along the way, please, um, just throw it out there. We'll be talking about it all on that.
Okay.
Well, site plan, I'm gonna point out two, um, you've heard a lot of, like, I'm gonna point out two specific areas that developer only saw through a little bit more. First is Tom would enter into the public vertical circulation elevator lobby. You can see the little kind of four circle of entry file, just a a walkway in the door. Uh, you'll see a little bit more of that when we get into the renderings. It was also discussed that that might be an element of the project that could be funded or not even complete by the D D A. But as for now, we're gonna go way into that element in part of the alternate. Throwing on and then we brought the green direction on the segment here on this, uh, northwest side is the dash, I'm kind of beating that slowly. Uh, bite out of that corner. Uh, that's, you'll see again in a couple slides later, there was some debt of alternative place for a mechanical, electrical, uh, moving up from park level up onto the main control. Also point out that you might recall the last thing we looked at had this north wall straight, it has an offset to where these two bays were deeper and these three bays were shallower. So we took that element from here and moved it over there. This is basically the support space that was given in plan. The firefighters to do their work for the S C B A area, storage area, EMS and their work areas to that in the plan. Those are two main elements of, um, advancement, I guess, or change in this case, uh, for the site plan. Next sheet is the park level plan. But this is a little different than what we talked about last time also. Uh, when we, uh, last really got into a conversation, we were, we were thinking about a station that's from the main street, uh, up and nothing on the park level. Um, and when you look at the site plan, it shows that earth embankment all along the north completely against the building as though there's no way into the local level. Um, except for this little piece and we needed to accommodate mechanical, electrical. Uh, the idea was to put it under kind of a more centralized place of the building so it could, um, network out to the different parts of the building with less run for electrical and H V C, et cetera, typing and so far. So this was more central than when we had it before. And underneath, um, the, um, park or the main street level of the dorm or living quarter area and also directly below the fire administration. So it made a lot of sense to vertically connect the three floors that way. And also gave us a way to throw in, I'll call it the raw space for the future public restroom areas, whereas you couldn't necessarily do that, didn't do the mechanical down there easily like this. Um, another thing, uh, that we did in this little area, you see those two walls shooting directly up, uh, on the uh, up towards the top of the page. Those are two walls that would be a portion of the elevator wall and a portion of the stair wall. You exercise that alternate to do that vertical circulation. But they're both needed to retain earth in this case anyway. So you're gonna, getting a dual use out of it until you actually did the vertical circulation. These walls serve a purpose to retain earth. That made some sense to us. So that was one, uh, departure from where we, uh, last, uh, talked about it together. The next sheet is, uh, A three zero one, which is uh, the main street level. This looks a lot like what we saw last time. I described in the site plan that this element right here support spaces, that was a board, so back wall with this could bore. And this element was over here. So we strengthened that up and we also moved this wall two feet this way, making, making these two bays deeper. Um, for flexibility and future aerial or tower after I said, you will get. Um, the other element, change in this, uh, was a constructibility item. Like this little dock here, we had one here before. Uh, so we squared this up, um, and moved all that around a little bit, increase in space and the econ operation, the flow in that space and a shower really separate the dirty, completely the clean and then back in the service by adding a shower here and pushing this around a bit. All that was kind of nuances of how they would operate and live in the building. They kind of also added to what I call the constructibility improvement by making that a square versus the notch, uh, before. The next sheet is Alpine Street. Which is the fire services element. Everything off to the left is, uh, shown as the apparatus space because that's a two-story high volume space. So really if you're looking at from an upper part of that space, that's why it's shown. Really the focus here is all on the left or the right-hand side was to the fire, the services area. Um, a couple of little things here, just some layering of the computer drawings that I'll just point out where the red arrow is you're walking into the vestibule, not into the space. So there'll be a second, the second door. So there's an airlock and a secure vestibule there. Um, that kind of acts as a, a, a a procedural way to get into the building. Another couple of things that have changed on this is, uh, refinement and betterment of the way uh, fire services would, uh, access down to the living quarters. So the operational level on Main Street. So that stair, which was an open stair out onto the mezzanine and down through the apparatus bay is now enclosed as a a stair shaft. So you're more of an interior space leaving fire services going down to the living quarters. Uh, which then you can prove that and a little space that's right out in front of that, which are the support spaces, infrastructure, restrooms, little closed area and janitorial, uh, plaza that also kind of got improved and kind of worked this out with the plan really nicely. Other element, I'm gonna focus on this side again, where it's really not a floor plan, except that we've extended what was the mezzanine here. That was accessed by a stair here. Now it's within this here. You have a catwalk coming across here onto a roof deck, which is high volume in this space, twenty feet. And the support spaces below it only need to be nine feet or so. So we have a, a floor on top of it to access the ceiling. The line with this mezzanine. So now you have this additional space for interior scenario training and also from storage, storage space as well. But it was kind of a byproduct of making some other shifts. Um, been a, a good improvement or add to the, to the overall project or the floor plan here. Uh, the next is the beginning to go through the alternates. Uh, so this is showing all the alternates in one, as I talked about where the mechanical and the raw space that would be for the restrooms. You can see the restrooms are built out in this case. And then these can be divided up into one, two, three different alternates. I'm showing them all as one. Uh, for the main two elements of add here is the two bays and it supports base, which is this. This is what we've been generally talking about and trying to get five up, two down, and this would be raw space. And then this element over here, that vertical public circulation elevator stair. This right here is part of the base project in terms of raw space. Uh, mechanic electric will be here. That's the build out for the public restrooms. Key things of this in operation, also in the cost is, uh, this is the hose drying tower bottom. So the way it works is the hoses are fifty feet long, ended at about fifty. If you hang them in the middle. Uh, so above, which is eighteen feet higher, the next floor is eighteen feet higher. So a firefighter could walk up to the podium, take a hose, drop it down to the lower level by just standing there and hanging it. Now, if we could look back at the base plan, if we wouldn't mind going back to the base plan. One more. Right, uh, this, so this is the, the main floor. So we accommodate both drives without a lower level. We have to make this stair to up to the twenty-five feet in order for the firefighter to go up the stair. Take the hose and put it on a hook, let it dry, and the dry have to bond that. So you can see operationally, that's a big deal. They have to go through that process, um, to put a, put a hook on the crane or holes on the crane, break it up, then go up to the top, take it off the crane and put it on the hook. But there is a byproduct that's a benefit here that could serve as a training element, just like this mezzanine is a uh, mezzanine over this is a, like, first scenario training. This could also serve as a training, uh, fortunately building. Well, were you indicating question?
Yeah, Zach has a hand up.
Pretty deep in the host tower details here. So I guess my question may not necessarily you, but to the science team, the committee and all the chief, but why hasn't there been consideration to mechanical hose drive? My visits to fire departments, I've asked them and mostly ones that have full-time firefighters have all switched to mechanical drive because of the not having to use the tower. Whereas it's primarily the volunteers that continue to use the hose towers because they don't have time to go and change it, it's people in the building. Adapted to this.
It, it has. And then the stations I've worked on, it's maybe fifty-fifty, maybe a little bit more leaning towards a hose tower versus a drying cabinet. And, um, I, I guess you hear a lot of different benefits for both. Uh, but, uh, the thing I hear about, uh, the cabinets is it doesn't do as thorough as a job as the gravity of hanging the hose. And I think that would be what the department would say here too, is that they feel it's a better outcome to their equipment if they drive by hanging versus drive by cabinet. That, that. Mr. Chief wants to chime in. So, um, back to the, to the first sheet of the ultimate. Um, that element is a nice trade-off by having the, one more. One more again. Well, I'm sorry. Yeah, Michael, sorry. So that is just translating from the footprint of the wall down to the low. And by doing that with the lower level, you know, phase, you liberate the tower at the, uh, main, main street level. So you can see, um, there's a stair which is, is a footprint of what's above. So it just drops down. So it's a really good connector for fire services on Alpine down to the living quarters, down to the bay. What's not shown here, um, again, I think it's a computer layering thing is we have two hose or two, uh, poles for vertical circulation also. So from the mezzanine at Alpine, you drop down to, uh, Main Street level. And there's a second, um, hole that drops from Main Street down to the apparatus space at the park level. And so that would be, you know, two, two other, may I say, operational benefits to, you know, really, uh, quick response times. Any questions on, on the way this is laid out?
David, just from, uh, maybe my eye, just a question, are those two bays centered below the first two bays above them?
Correct.
Okay. So I make sure my lines are, like, okay. And, and, and is so when, when we talk about the elevator and the stairwell, it's that darker box on the north part, right?
Elevator, lobby, stair.
That's, that's, okay, that, that would, that's where it would go if we built it at the same time or it could be added in the future.
Later on. It's, it's been planned so you can do it now, uh, in point one and go ten.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Joe? Can you explain the two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar delta? There's, there's a note on there and I was trying to remember how it went with whether I think it was the mechanical went above or below and whether it was the bays below or above.
I don't understand whatever, but in concept, um, we, we all the last weeks of while we're over by the book, we do differently. And it was basically forget that alternate, forget this alternate, this raw space piece that's part of the base bid. It says, if we could take that and move it upstairs, we can save money. And that that's, if we wanted to accommodate that upstairs, what we need is to have mechanical. This seems to be a nice little byproduct of putting mechanical down. But we can move mechanical up and we have two different rotations where we thought of that. One was this corner. And I'll introduce a new idea was, um, that's been a team and I've been working on trying to kind of better cost location.
Yeah. From the economic standpoint, in the summary, that's in your packet, the detailed summary, um, there's an applied credit, uh, that backs out the cost of building, uh, these lower park level mechanical room and future lobbies. It was done in the essence that if the lower level apparatus space do not get put in, we would not recommend building a, a park level mechanical room. We would keep it up on the, uh, main street level grade. That was the applied credit. The revised packet that I sent Justin on Thursday, I took that out, showed it as an option to take it out so that the bottom line number shows everything that's in there. But that's a discrepancy.
Okay, thank you.
So just to be clear, the base plan that we're talking about has it on the lower level?
Right. And if you want to go to the next slide, it shows Main Street with the ultimate of the stair. And elevator. It also shows the power, the stair tower now becomes this the hose drain drying area, which is in the bay. Which works out really nice. I mentioned it was an alternative because it's a mechanic electrical, electrical, we don't put it in this corner, um, or if we don't put it down below, it'd be right in this area right here, which would be access up to four yards from the day room. Uh, which should give it even a better central location. Um, and the, the big thing there was not putting on the west side, uh, takes out about a forty thousand dollar premium of just extending the service of power and water from Alpine all the way across to there. That's just the infrastructure premium fund. So in the end, we're gonna look at that kind of location. If we're not doing something at the lower level, I think that's gonna, you know, you give a, you know, nice little benefit to the bottom line. Um, so there really, in essence, that's the only piece that I'm showing there that's different is the move, removal of the, um, hose drying stair and then the, the location or the application of the elevator and stair for the vertical circulation. The, uh, next is, uh, Alpine Street. Alternative, also showing the stair and elevator. There's a little clarification I didn't make here. Um, again, this is not a layer of anything. So this is kind of a full box. This wall right here, it would be, um, the, the front desk or reception area. And the admin, and this lobby is not, I will ask, or is a wall. So there would be an access to the public, the, the bottom here being here, the elevator and the stairs, there's no connection here. There's a, an entry to fire and entry to the public, is the way that uh, worked out. And that was a little different than it was back in August and September and October. But as we worked through that with the user group of the fire, um, they thought that would be a better function for their operation. In terms of getting in the space and, um, interacting with public would be on a destination they have to go to the flight. Do that. Go to the next one. Um, so here is a number of elevations to indicating, uh, some heights and, um, material choices and, and design that has evolved over the last, um, several months. Uh, there has been, uh, input from the planning commission and then conversation with the, um, committee and we have, uh, provided an alternative to that. It's okay. I'll hand that out to you tonight. Can I do that?
Sure.
Oh, okay. I have archives if you want to copy, since you're gonna have something to print from your back. And I'll handle that.
Josh, go ahead.
So there are, the, the first response was, how do we address Main Street elevation? Um, not from the technical aspect of the code, of the ordinance, but more of a a feeling, I would say, from the commission comments, it was um, the building presented that you have in your package had a little more industrial look to it.
Thank you.
Um, more contemporary and they wanted to see something a little more traditional. Uh, simple thing we had for the, the sign that, um, there that here which, um, it was a purpose to. it was a purpose to hide mechanical equipment behind, but also respond to the slope of the site kind of from a design standpoint, it was contextual. Uh the next thing Sam had done was what we're going to look at next. There are three images we kind of looked at, and how do we move away from the industrial look? It still certainly had industrial look to it, it's got five big doors, which is hard to overcome. Uh and not have someone say industrial look. This is a real simple trade pair of the wall across the top, basically. The next image kind of dressed it up a little bit. And so there are thousands of the same simple, it's been happening by the door, but we have some of our particular detailing with the big manure, the corbling, um block across here, giving a little shadowing, uh and some definition. Maybe some different lighting, that you'll know here is the the red doors versus the black doors, that was another thing that was um commented on. There are also other types of doors. Um especially if you want to say, can we move a little bit further towards tradition versus industrial? Uh these are overhead doors, uh which are very common. And there's another doors, I think is preferred, um operationally, maintenance-wise, safety-wise. They're called four-hole doors, so they have a much more traditional sturdy look to them, not overhead. Um they come at a pretty good cost increase though. Um but any, if you ask anyone in firefighting services, operationally, they kind of pay for themselves over time, because they open quicker, not opening up, they're opening across, so people aren't running into them as they're exiting apparatus bay and having to fix the truck and having to fix the door. It's a, I think it really addressed the comment, and I think Michelle shared with me. I don't know whose comment it was, but she sent me a picture of one, so that's what we were thinking, but um it was an interesting coincidence that we both looked at the same thing. And this moves the signage off to the side, it's a little more prominent, it would be in the high position versus over the doors. There's the next slide, which is again, just uh well, there's another one, maybe it's putting your hand up, there's three, it looks like I've sent you two of the same uh this way, but the third one basically doesn't have that goose neck fixture over the door, that has the corbling and the more architectural detailing. I think both of the latter two are good, and this really is what I was trying to describe, so the over the goose neck isn't over the doors. So that was one thing, responding to the the design uh in the comments we were getting of the uh the city through the commission and where else they might have come from. Uh this um was from a meeting, it was like over budget, what can we do between now and tonight? High-end cost-saving measures. And one idea was, well, there's not a lot of, there's basically no fat in the building, but there's potential to reduce in the scope. Um which brings compromise, but this was the version which would go from five to four. I would say you'd you'd have a lot more motivation to put the basement in with this kind of thing, with future flexibility. Uh this was a deeper bay, can accommodate for six apparatus that were indicating, um but it does not allow any future flexibility, any growth, you'd be maxed out for apparatus kind of from the get-go. At this rotation. But it was a version that we thought could reduce costs, so we wanted to at least put it out there as an option, and you can kind of flip through this one image. Other than that's a little more straight on, it's very, it's almost exactly the same as uh what was on a five-way uh solution. One other thing I suggested is instead of all the stone, let's just turn the corner here a little bit. Take this stone down here to the water table, just like this, so we're not having a lot of money, but while we're trying to speed, we're going to take money out whatever we can. Other than what we're pointing out here, maybe part of the picture we'd be looking at, this is your typical clay masonry over here. As far as the brickwork goes, and from here across here, and so the variance of the thing is a a concrete mason, so it's made of concrete, it's a clay, that's a different format. Uh this is shown as eight inches high, sixteen inches wide, but it has a different look to it. Uh comes a lot of different finishes, polished and standard or split, where it kind of looks rough. We haven't gotten to that level of design refinement yet, um but I wanted to point it out because it is different from what traditional clay masonry looks like. Uh it comes in other sizes, they don't have to be eight inches high by sixteen, maybe four inches high by sixteen, a lot of different ways to do it. Uh this is the new thing, and we also introduced here along here, the only real functioning windows are this one, this one, these are all um an attempt to create the right bulk of the mainstream in terms of how the building materials are used, and doors does require some ratio of blast uh to masonry, so that helps with that component of the ordinance, but it also maybe more so is really about making the building fit to downtown, not moving away from what was looking more industrial, it looked like a fire station, this felt a little bit more a storefront-like look.
Jamie?
Yeah, just about coming in that regard, so just doing a quick street view of the not so the row houses, the 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 retail and next to this building, gendered, this down Main Street, probably fire station. I just noticed that a lot of that, if they don't have an arch on the top of the window, they have some other basin restructure or something else that gives it to you in some of the parts on top. I think that was probably more expensive, but uh for you, when I look at the whole of doors, I often see that in context, that arch doorway, so I don't know, like, cost associated with arcing the large doors and creating some arch features, it's like that was painted into the and and including the street here, just the drive, there's a lot of of that sort of.
Yeah, they're actually very nice. I did get a couple of pictures of those as well from downtown. How that looks, and I'm thinking about it, and you start the elevations, Josh, from the one, you know, straight on view. There is a technique that we use quite a bit to give that arch compression without putting arch top door, so in this space here, which is just masonry, we can offset or totalize, it's different, so it looks like an arch across here, but the door seems flat. Well, doesn't bring that big cost of putting a curved steel mantle to support the masonry so flat. But if imagery, it looks like it's got an arch, and I have a lot of examples where we actually use that in the design approach, cost effective in two minutes. Has a little cost to it, but way cheaper than doing a real arch company. You know, there's a, you know, there's a, another, maybe it's not, I think it's easier to do here versus here, maybe a little complicated to do all of those. I think you can get that feeling of arches, if you just put them in five and put it up.
So, Michelle?
I was going to say when they did provide information, I needed to send it to the planning commission, they gave two comments back and getting your comments, we're the same, they provided a picture of the foundation of how, obviously, this is scale and massing, it's not, you know, the new, but it's that per process, so I sent those comments to people here as well, so.
And one of the four, four-fold doors example that you said too.
Yeah, they had no, planning commission has nothing any time around, they want some of them. Maybe we call it steam, but it was never.
So David, um you were asked to look at cost-saving measures, you said, you mentioned, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep. What, what does going from five bays to four bays do?
Surprisingly, it doesn't cut a lot of cost, um.
No, it's not surprising to me, I just wondered what the number is.
I'll let Sam go through that. Four thousand, four hundred thousand dollars. That's all it really amounts to. I mean, there's some other little things, but that's the big thing, is go from five to four, move the mechanical room. Um you know, get rid of the tower if you put something below, and then change stone to CMU or another material. There's just not a lot of other cost-cutting measures other than scope, cutting scope, which is the five or four bays.
Okay, so can you, I'm going to switch gears on you a little bit, before we get to numbers on dollars. This has been presented with a base concept, where you're trying to get a base bid or a base which I'm taking as the five bays. I mean, up until today, we haven't, we didn't see this in the packet until just a minute ago, right? So, so the base, the base concept was five bays up on Main Street. Right?
Yes.
Okay, and the only lower level elements would be the mechanical room and the build-out for the bathroom, not the build-out, the the raw space, the raw space for what would be a future bathroom. Right?
Right.
Okay, that's my version of the base plan.
Right.
Okay, with two stories, Main Street and Alpine Street are upper level, as you call it on the plan sheets, upper level. And then we, we asked you to tell us what the alternates or the add alternates would be. Okay, and the, the, the primary add alternate that I'm interested in is the lower level space. Okay, and that's the most expensive add alternate, as it turns out. Okay, and then there's the the second add alternate, which I'm very interested in, which is the stairway and elevator, which you've told us could be built separately. As, as this, are you gonna, are, are we going to get hard bids on all of this? Yes, okay, that's the answer I wanted, that's, I, okay. So as it relates to the schedule, we're here at the end of December. And we've got this preliminary sets of numbers. Okay, and the preliminary, the preliminary, I say numbers cost. The preliminary cost that's in the packet is about ten point eight million for the base bid plus all your soft costs and such. I haven't figured out if there's anything left out yet, because I'm still learning the numbers a little bit, but it's ten point eight million, I assume you've seen Justin's worksheet versus nine point seven. Okay, and nine point seven is the revenue that we have. That's the eight point four that we asked the public for in terms of the bond issuance. That's the million dollars that we put aside in general fund. And we've learned that there's about three hundred thousand dollars in interest that we're going to earn on the bonds while it's money is sitting there right now.
Yep.
So the one, I'm just using around of eight point four, three hundred and a million is nine point seven million as our base amount of money that we've currently anticipate using to do this. Okay, so so right now, we're one point one above that. As of today, right? So when, when do the numbers, if, if, as you, if we were to say to you, you know, continue forward with whatever you're going to call the next step, design development or more detailed design or the further advancement of this, till you get to a point where Samuel and his team are going to get a firm bid. What, what, what amount of time is there between today and that point? And if you need to refer to the schedule, we, we saw this schedule for the first time two weeks ago or sixteen days ago, as well. When we met on December eleventh, you, we had included in the packet, but we really never got a chance to go, to go over it with, with anybody, and maybe it makes sense for you to go over it with us. I want to understand how we learn what the actual costs are, we know what the projected costs are, and how this relates to the what is it, GMP?
The guaranteed maximum price.
Because I don't see that acronym unless I'm missing it on here anywhere.
Yeah, it's a very, it's about second line. So to overview this, it, as you said, it goes through the different phases. And it's gonna, it's a, it has a companion document, the checklist, which I, I think we also shared when we first talked about this. But each one of these phases is a way to coordinate the team and their efforts, so we're all kind of hitting the same milestones together. And a big part of this is that the sequencing and phasing for getting some long lead items done, uh which are getting a civil earthwork demo package ready, so that's going to be early, which we're saying is um I think somewhere in the middle of January, we're worth kind of reviewing it, what is it going to be in that? And then going to bid with that um more like uh end of March. So at the end of March, the long lead items, and that's, looking at the the calendar where it says uh presented DD package to city council for approval, then right below that, um early release, down available civil package, so we would present to you where we are with the development package, and in that package, we would say, here's what we want to go to market with for those elements, uh site, earthwork, civil. We get that that number back first, so it's going to happen in steps, because we want to be able to release that to get bid, so when we get down to June, we're ready for those trades to start work, the whole package or the GMP is done. Similarly, we want to do an early release package uh for mechanical, electrical items that are long lead, so we're not waiting at the end of construction to get those things to fire up the building, like transfer switch, generator, those sorts of things are, I'd say fifteen, sixteen weeks out, something like that. So we need to order those in advance of construction, so they are kind of arriving on time during the activity during construction, so those things would be bid, you know, in those kind of two steps, you know those pieces. A whole picture, it's a whole cost, you really wouldn't know till June, which we'd get the GMP by July one.
Okay.
That's when we present that, so we got the bid early part of June.
And is that when we would, is that when we have to make the decision on whether or not we want to build the bu- the the bottom level, the bit, the alternate base?
We could prolong it till then, but I would like to know today. Are we going that direction or not going that direction? Because otherwise, I'm paralleling a lot of things, which we can do if that needs to be the way you make the decision. But it would be um much more beneficial to the project schedule and to the cost if we could do that decision now, and schedule, hopefully you can see why that is, but from a cost standpoint, if we put out to the marketplace, we want to do this, and we want to do this, and if they're very different, we're going to lose contractors one, and they're not going to be interested in spending a lot of time to bid two projects and only get one. But they're also going to look at it like, I gotta, I gotta do this one, but this one too, and this one I have to decrease some of this one, decrease some of that one, to end up with two numbers. It's going to be complicated, so you're going to lose contractors. And then when the contractors bid, something complicated, they're going to throw a little something extra in there. I think from a cost standpoint, bidding such big alternatives is not to your benefit. Yes, we're going to have alternates in the job, that you decide when you do the GMP, but these monumental alternates would be much better decided before we get too far down the road. If it's not today, it should be sometime soon. And that's my perspective, and I think Sam could probably spread a little more light from contracting cost standpoint, why sooner is better to do that decision.
Okay, well, up, I mean, up until you said that today, it's all presented, they're all the same additive alternates on a list, they're just numbered differently. One, two, three A, three B, four, five, six, through eleven, or whatever the heck they are. There's no, there's been no discernment of that, other than the, the date on the calendar that says February twelfth, determinative park level bays are included.
So what are you meaning when you're kind of rattling off the numbers that prioritizing them?
I'm trying to figure out, and what I'm trying to figure out ultimately is what is it the council can do to help accelerate or maintain the schedule? And, and, and that, but I'm, but I'm also just trying to understand, you know, when we're going to be asked a question, like tonight, this is a discussion. As it was presented uh by our city manager and the agenda, this is, there's no decision further than the sheriff issue.
True.
Okay, so we're
If we're prioritized, sooner we can get to the answer. Design, renovation, and the boost, applications or issues, subcontractor.
Well, as a, as a Well, as a, as a means of being an open book. You know, in, in addition, in addition to the nine point seven. Million. That I mentioned earlier, the eight point four in bonds, the one million that we set aside from general fund, and the three hundred thousand in interest. We have about two point four million in general fund reserves that's not assigned to anything. Okay, now, the estimate where we're at of ten point eight. If we accepted that today. It's up half of those. There isn't enough. To do one point four in addition. Today. I mean, it's. We're, we don't have it.
Understood.
Okay, now, that doesn't mean, I guess that, you know, you, you mentioned the. Five to four up top saves. Four hundred thousand, or whatever the number was. You know, that's a third of the tube down below. That's how I look at the number, okay, um. I guess I'm interested in what else there is there. Towards that, but that, I guess, so, you know, the, the time for me buys me a chance to figure out how to afford this. Okay, so if, if time is against us on it, I need to know what that is, so I know how long we have to figure out the options. I mean, there, there, there is other ways that council. Could fund this out instead of just reserves. We, we, we could, we could decide to do a separate bond. Okay, now, it's not the perfect environment to be doing it in, but we, we could. Which would, you know, generate a bigger amount of money now, and we pay that back over ten years. I'd have to think about if we can afford to do that. We do have a, an, a, a previous facility bond that's gonna come off of our books. In. Either twenty-five or. Late twenty-five, I think. Which means we just have to carry both of them at the same time for a two-year period, and then one would be relieved, would relieve us and.
We, 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 we wrapped the bond for this around that one. So, the bond for here inflates once that one comes off.
The timings endpoint show.
Well, okay, but that, that's still, it's still there, that's fine, that's fine.
From the times. You did, you were groomed to do what they need to do. And for us to get enough information for you to make good solid decisions. The thought when we prepare the schedules that we've worked, here we are, with updated concept of it. We're working into schematics now, and we finish roughly in the third week of January on that. In two weeks for budgeting of that schematic. Come back with schematic completed, which would be the base plan plus the alternates. The number. For the twelve, and I think it coincides with your council meeting, that you'd have the information. Really matured from a, what, what are these, these alters are still a loop, right? I mean, you're looking at. Sketches that we created from Thursday last week till this week, or Wednesday last week. But that was built into the overall schedule, that when you would do this second round of plugging. After schematics, present those and decide. Would it be great if we could have said, yeah, we're gonna do the basement or not? But I, I get, there's a lot of other considerations to make that kind of decision. And that's how this schedule is prepared.
Okay, so, so. Back to my question, then, we're still on target to ask that question and make a decision on the twelfth, then?
No, we're gonna have schematic.
To stay on schedule.
Yeah, we're probably slipping a day here, a day, day there, maybe it's, we're benefiting a day or losing a day, the schedule is a lot of documents.
Okay, I will, we meet every two weeks, I'm just trying to think through that, you know.
Do other, I'll say takeaway, their discussion points. Um, you know, David had mentioned long lead items, there is a long lead item, thus. Uh, as we go through it, I think it's important to note that. Are here, because it's such a long lead, it's not a day long expense. Keep that in our minds, that there's a commitment in place. And they're typically, if, if it's a twelve month lead item. It, it's typically any percent, twenty percent to thirty percent of the duration of the times. We're in line. There's no dollars being spent, there's no dollars, but once they start assembling raw material parts. Again, that order can be canceled at any point, but the longer you go in, the sooner. As we get closer to it, we'll map out, uh, here's the list of lead items, here's the cost expect, expense. For the total of what's there, and then within that, you know, here's the duration we have to cancel without recognizing any expense, but.
When do we start the first long lead item, when do we place the order on that?
Um, we were targeting. End of March. Okay, okay. Down there, the blue box and the black dot, release will hold on contract. Right where the yellow bar items are on the left.
Okay.
So, like Sam was just saying, we'll release it to in line, we'll hold on contracts. Until you have to make the commitment possible.
Okay. I see those, okay, that's what those are, okay, thank you.
No, I was gonna say about the alternatives, the. So. And we had the budget that we had before, right? It would have been a question of. Do we allocate extra resources that we potentially have? App. To do those things. Now, with the situation is that. We. There's two parts to the budget, contingencies, and then whatever the bids actually come back at. The worst case scenario, as far as I'm concerned, is we say, don't do the downstairs bays. And we go out for bid, and we get a little bit further down the r- road, we find out that. You don't need half the contingencies, and the bids came back better than we expected on. Now, we're in a position, then we're in a position to say, well, shoot, we could have done the downstairs. Had we known. So. We're caught in a chicken and egg thing, right? You can't gamble on a spending and thinking we might get some of it back, we're.
Well, and, and, and for, for the contingencies, the, the concern there is that we won't know. The actual final cost of everything, un, 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 until the punch list is done. Until the, until the project is one hundred percent complete, and, and we actually know how much we've had to dip into project contingency.
From, from my, from my standpoint.
We know, shouldn't be till the end of the punch list, we gotta know long before that if it approves on.
Close, 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 close to the end of the project.
Done this for forty years, and we have to perform a project as a, that contingency is gonna get utilized, but we don't. Go, so they're making a decision right now, what if we have two hundred thousand dollars, four hundred thousand contingency on the project left that was unspent? We're gonna know that, valid to the project. Because the risks in this building are gonna be subterranean. Uh, during demolition, during environmental, course of doing that, some of that due to orders right now. Yeah, you get to the midpoint of the project, everything's determined. You know, where things are happening, we're on feet of items are. People can read about that updates and contingencies. We, we know that you're at the midpoint, we know that. Everything's bought out, since production, since sequence, there's two hundred thousand dollars over. That's the other dollars that are spent on projects, and then a decision can be made if there's. Piece of equipment that maybe was preferred to get bought, but those opportunities come, I, I wouldn't usually, didn't see the whole back, maybe. If, if we, uh, I think. Anything's possible, I don't anticipate the rest of the bids come back such that there's that much of the savings, you know, and, and we could make that choice. We were talking about something that was, you know, ten thousand dollar range, I could have, something that's a one point four million dollar range. I, I don't see that.
So you're, you're estimating, the numbers we're seeing are pretty tight, then?
The, the other thing I wanna point out in the schedule is two other points. As each design matures, we build from schematic, and if that's available, we can make another detail. That, that's limited, to go to the problem, develop and. Uh, as we talk about schedule, efficiency, and other thing, another item that through. Go ahead and cap load proceedings. So in order for this entire project to happen. Ideally, improvements at the city hall building would take place first. Maybe simultaneously, uh, while backing up new buildings, permitting for fire station. So, it's a decision that will have to be made by city council as to, I think, by. Numbers for the improvements for this are roughly around two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That require permanent improvements for that. If there's the ability for that work to start in advance of the final bidding of primary project. That, that makes the time more efficient, that allows, uh, this work to occur, take place. The agencies can move it up, and then. Next day, next week, building starts to come down.
I, I would, I would say that could absolutely happen.
But I've needed, but that's a way to make the schedule.
Well, we can affirm that, I mean, we can certainly slow it a quarter million. That, that can absolutely happen, for here, I, I mean, that part is, appreciate that.
One of the thought we had on that was. Did you just do the small part necessary for fire to move in? The sheriffs is part of the fires. You can't have the same subterranean's doing that, do this, it would be two bits in one. Excuse me. For sure.
What? What subterranean stuff is here? Yeah, okay. Oh, subterranean, I'm sorry, I was, I thought, I heard the wrong. Zach, sorry.
We can't spend ten million dollars in a work station, work station. Uh, it's definitely getting less inner city, or anything suburb. Most World War Two. Public structure vibes. Uh, previous one, I closed my eyes. I am not easy to profit that idea of having. Fantasy wall on it, wall, basically, much prominent part. And another cost, so. They can let them, they have the vital base, they don't have to be very often. The building themselves cost more. But there's also space cost. They need more space to operate with the base, and we. I would, I would say that, they're sharper, they're more, they're better. They're more redundant to, from failure.
They could also fold out and set it in, which would alleviate that. A lot of complicated maneuvering firefighter in front of an app. Well, that's an option.
Zach, which, you're looking at the elevation there, which elevation on there are you referring to, which ones, point out the west elevation for me? David, or? I think you were talking.
Thank you, Zach, in general, I think.
Yeah, the apparatus space, the, the wall, the panting wall or block.
Yeah, and you know, switching later, not being blocked.
Oh, okay, I was trying to decipher, okay.
It can be done nicely, I didn't mean, there are bad buildings, or. They're not attractive sometimes when you don't use that material correctly. And, um, there's a way to do it nicely. For this kind of structure. Uh, we use it not all the time, but. You know, and closed all the time. We'd much rather cavity wall, which gives you the chance for another material side to them. Um, but that's coming at a pretty hefty cost. And the reason we use the cavity wall is for energy code purposes. Um, because you can get the proper vapor flow, and well, not proper, but. Um, it's better, because the cavity captures that, but a building like, or that portion of the building. Won't be an energy code anyway, except scriptively. Because of the door, it won't be closed all the time, you're gonna be hot, cold, hot, cold, you just not be able to control the climate. Um, consistently, there, that's why heaters in there are quick to heat, and that's why the radiant heats are in there. But that material, uh, CMU is a good application from a cost standpoint. And a operation from an energy standpoint, because you're not gonna save energy by doing a cavity wall. In a space like this, I mean.
Zach?
We, we, at all costs, we'd avoid epoxy in the apparatus bay. Every single station I went to that had, I asked them about it, and they universally hated it. Because of the heat and the water, it pops up. The fire station fed it had little rubber mats that we put like beneath the wheels, because of that popping up. Because of the need to put a little sand and the wood plates in there, so people don't slip and crack their head. You can never get it truly clean. Uh, I recognize that polished concrete is more expensive initially, but it's the superior product. And it will have significant reduction for the.
I agree.
When do you anticipate the flood plans? Permit going in?
I don't know when it's actually gonna happen, and I know there's gonna be our first meeting, and then pre-application type meeting to talk about it. That'll be in January, I think sometime, I don't think that date's set.
Okay, we, we've, we've requested a pre-application meeting?
I don't think it's been set, I think there's been some initial conversations, but I don't think there is a meeting set.
Okay, that would be good to get set.
Yeah, all the, all the engineering needs to get more engaged, and we're somewhat waiting for a. Point to say we're going full speed, we got a lot of it done architecturally, and there's, and, and package, there's a little bit more detail, but. Um. This week, or this week coming, we're doing orientation with MVP. And, uh, we're gonna get a little more data for our schematic design, so that next plugging round is gonna be more indicative. Of specifics versus, um, concept.
My last comment, and it's really for you and Michelle. Um, I know we took, or had some drawings. Put in front of the planning commission. Um. In early December, and that got some comments, but. And I know it looks like on the schedule, we're not planning to be in front of planning commission. Um. Until March fourth. I would suggest that it might be, be a good thing to go earlier than that, and just talk to them. And give them a chance to ask some questions earlier that you might benefit from. Prior to a formal meeting. Given they've already seen the outside of the building and. And such. I don't know how to do that. I don't know under what mechanism, under pre-range, I would, but I would, I think I would talk to Matt and. See if he thinks it would be beneficial to hear from our team. Leading up to a formal submission. We might gain some insight from those nine individuals that we don't have today. So, just. Thoughts. I'm not trying to steer that committee, but.
Was one of the matters to me. And whether you do. And whether you're excited or you're, you know, proud, or you just come along. Up and back. Um. I think I'm not, I think. I think I'm. Not moving exactly. The biggest issue. With the challenge, you're, you're so engineering, whatever they have. It really focuses on the, on the strong, hard information. As soon as. It's got enough feedback, um. Councilors to, what the plan might have, they examine this and leave. Oh, James can be able to figure out, what is. What in the answer to the religion is going to be. Um. You know, this is a site that's already. Vened up. You utilize the um. The standard that you have to maintain. That only the implement. That's all we've got about the data. Is that the biggest thing called in that you need to. Many areas that are vulnerable. Only. Keep the timing down. And then follow it at once. But right or left, good movies. And we just around the pre-acting. Have all of the.
I I would have it. I would.
It's the technical. How is this meaning before?
I I would get as much of it on the table as you can early. It's what I'm trying to encourage. Pre-apps the way to do it, or if you go and. Present what you have and give them a heads up of what's coming in. I think it's all beneficial to get them thinking and on board and part of it. They're going to need time to think about it. And we have, we have time. We have two meetings before you're going to be there with a formal package. So if there's questions. They're a resource to the city. I would think we should use them.
Yeah, our plan when we discussed it at the end of this time in was to do pre-app, preliminary and final. And that's kind of what the schedule was based upon. And I think we could combine if we did a pre-app. And all that went really well, then maybe we go right to. Combine.
Yep, that'd be great. I'd get the pre-up schedule. And and I I would, you know. I would meet with parks too. And all these boards and commissions are important and they're all. Going to have thoughts on this that will benefit the process. I think they'd all benefit from some type of. Attendance by David and Michelle or whoever explaining what's going on. I mean, otherwise they're just hearing about it. I mean, I I doubt very few of them are looking at all the stuff in the packet, but there's a lot of information here to share and the the. As with any big project, the more you can introduce it a little bit at a time, the more people absorb it. And. Gain comfort in it as opposed to being. Caught on something. So. Just my two cents for. Other questions for David? Sam, I appreciate you guys coming out during Christmas week.
Great to be here with you.
You're welcome every meeting. Zach?
So. Listen, Churchill friends of Americans. Law is to write for us all our options. I I asked this body to. Be a better person than me. And to reconsider this. So I've done with the information on age sixty two and eighty four. The premium costs that became costs associated with this location. Comes to two million, six hundred forty three thousand, three hundred forty dollars. Say again, so Lucas can get an extra two million, six hundred forty three thousand, three hundred forty dollars. Of costs that are incurred with this location. We've got two point six million dollars down the button. At all.
Which items, which elements are you considering as part of this? Just so I understand how you got there.
Auburn's. Demolition and removals, earthwork and sediment, seven thousand three yards of fill. Parking lot retaining walls and fences. Foundations, not in the building, but running foundations, but it's not going to be unapproved materials, so hopefully the cost here. Underground short water detention. Do you ever see a motivation at Thrill? Environment, encanny soils, landfill, pit feeds. Millways intake outfall. Uh, sea hall modification for temporary fire use, modify temporary fire use at city hall for permanent shared use allowance. On the back page, need to rerelocation demo charges temporary service, all fine street right away vacation. Fire station parcel flip sound green. Uh, main street flow playing mitigation. And then the cost we heard denied associated with the fires.
Okay.
With the the temporary with the the sheriff here.
Thanks for outlining those. Um, Zach, uh, Justin, you had put in the uh, the memo to us, the consideration of whether or not we wanted to sell the. The property.
Uh.
I thought. Yeah.
As as one. Possible path forward.
Yeah, what 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 would be the steps we would have to take if we wanted to go down that path?
So um. Council would have to adopt a resolution uh to initiate a ballot measure. Um. Which would then have to. Go in front of those voters to be approved.
So it'd be November.
Potentially. Um.
Yeah, potentially.
Depending on timing.
Yep.
Um, and then.
But no earlier than that. Unless we do a special election, right?
Correct. I mean, more than likely, um. And then, I mean, then we'd have to. Um. Recruit a a sale.
Real estate.
Yeah, real estate agent and go through the advertising process and. Assuming that they're they're. Are interested parties. Um. Yeah, we'd have to work through zoning and. Site, but potential site development depending on what. What council sees as is going there and what it's zoned for and what people might be interested in. Developing it for.
So are we are we allowed to to ask the question? Um. On the sale. With. A. Price in the in the question, in the ballot question?
I would have to.
I mean, I don't see why not, right? Like, 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 let's say that somebody offered us. Six hundred thousand dollars. The question could be specific, right? Do you want to sell the property for six hundred thousand dollars? Right? And that would be the.
I I would think it would be something to the to the effect of, you know, to. You know, do the voters authorize the the sale for an amount? No, no, no less than. X amount or or something, something to that. That affect. Yeah, so I don't know the.
The charter. So the charter amendment doesn't preclude us from talking to people about the sale of it. We just can't finalize anything until there's a vote of the people. Is that fair?
I'd I'd have to. Double check the the charter language, but I I believe that.
I don't think.
I don't I don't think there's a stipulation on it.
Okay. Thank you. So now.
Yeah, I just want to um make a comment um that. Often when we discuss um. What could have been at Meadowview versus. Where the location is right now. Um. We do talk about as. Councilman or Michelle's brought up the what would be the cost saving, but what it is not discussed. Is that if that had happened. The cost of maintaining the building in eighty one forty, the cost of them. Demolishing that building at eighty one forty, the cost of turning it to anything else at eighty one forty. All of those are still costs that. Would be on the city as well. There could be calculations of which goes this way or that way. And. I. All of you know, all the city knows that I originally voted for Meadowview. But I don't want to sit here and just talk about one side of it. Without talking about the other side of it and the cost that we could. Have and. It it is part of the whole picture. It's not just this little piece of pie. Just want to put that on the table as well. Thank you.
Sorry, Zach.
And you don't recall any reason why we have to demolish the building that was building. My recollection is the building was investigated. You're told it has been structural state. Except for maybe in that roof. It's it's a strong man argument to say we have to, we have to tear it down. We don't, we didn't think about what we're going to be able to find out. There are plenty of uses for that sort of storage. So.
Wow.
I just want to say, because I don't understand why we're having this discussion right now. We are well past this discussion. We had this discussion. Last year, the year before, the year before, we, this isn't where we are. And. This is. Okay, fine. Apparently people think this is where we are. Go ahead. I'm done.
Jamie?
It's relevant. Because we don't have the money to do the project that we wanted to do when we picked this location. So we're talking about. Reality with significant portions of money from other city accounts. Do. In pain to force this square peg into the round pool, not only physically. But now financially, that's why it's.
Wow.
I just think it's all speculation at this point, and so it's not relevant. Because. Who knows what would have happened at the other location? None of that. We're not just, we're not going down that path, so we can't say for certain. And. Also, I mean, I voted for this location, but I think I've made it clear that I really. Like, didn't feel strongly one way or the other. So this is not me sitting here digging my heels in saying, oh, it must be at this location. It just. We. Why are we trying to? Why are we having a discussion about? Backing out of the path that we've gone down when we've taken forever to get here anyway?
Look, all of my questions today have been centered on. Doing more than the base bid. Which. Is a significant upgrade and meets the needs of the department. But if there's a way to find to use the time we have. To do more, I'd like to at least be able to consider those things. The five bay base bid option is a very solid option. And I think long term, the. Stairwell and elevator could be a huge addition. Whether we're able to do it at the same time or not, I don't know. I don't know today. Um. But that's why we are discussing and frankly, we haven't, you know, had the conversation with either of them in a in a while. As a whole council, and I think this has been beneficial. I've learned some things and appreciate. The information you brought back. Um. You know, like I said, if there's, if 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 either of you. Um. Think of things that council can do to help keep the schedule going or accelerate it. I'd personally like to know or like through Justin, like make sure the council's aware of what those are. So. For now, we'll we'll work towards the meeting on the twelfth to to think about the lower bay decision and. Let you guys keep working on the early release stuff. Um, Joe?
Same, you mentioned the um. Beginning on the temporary facilities. When do we need to give you that? Invite or start?
Yeah, we'd like to have you start that as soon as you can.
Um, so it's a, it's a design and permitting piece, so we'll sequence that accordingly. Um. So, yes, the correct answer is we can update the schedule and key dates for that and bring those forward to bring that design forward, through any. Permits and amendments associated associated push forward.
My duty.
So permitting for that would. Would be back in January then? I mean, you'd start submitting plans to the building department, that type of thing?
And it better. We're submitting on February sixteenth.
Okay, submitting on February sixteenth. So you're giving them a month to turn it around. Thank you again, both of you for your time this evening.
You do.
Any further comments by council? Okay, we're back around a non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience physically here tonight that would like to speak under non-arranged? Is there anyone online that would like to speak under non-arranged? Please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands up and. Here in person or otherwise. Um, we're down to council comments. Zach, if you'd lead it off, please.
Yep, um. The. In the part of youthful sector that have the practice of the class. Amen. That can fall off and back on the floor, not around. Uh, I will hope that in future we make sure that don't do that. I'm only probably got a problem with glass out of his feet. Uh, if there is opportunity, I'd like probably with us, not folks, to organize, go out there and check to see what happened. That's all.
Thank you, Jamie.
Uh, sure. Couple of related one. Some costs are some. Theory that's. Well, I heard a comment tonight that. The sheriff's office department was excited about the potential reallocation of this building. And while that is. Encouraging and perhaps. A additional justification for making that reallocation, I wish. We all would have been able to read between. The buried in mine of a fire chief. Who stepped on one of the cases and will operate out of wherever you put us. Which is a far cry from. An enthusiastic influence that I'm saying at the front.
You said fire chief, did you mean police?
This was Lieutenant Hunt.
Right, and we are in contrast. That, as you say, so enthusiastic about this location. Which was. Right, that was the direction of our current direction. Yeah, when our fire chief. Made the statement of multiple occasions that they'll operate out of wherever they'll. Out of wherever we put them. We could have read between a lot.
I'm sorry, I I followed, but I didn't hear that clearly. Thanks for repeating it.
Yeah. Regarding, you know, the ability to compare, compare and contrast the current direction with a now hypothetical. Direction, that was a decision of councilway. That did not have to be. We have been and could continue to be. As we are with the current situation. Comparing multiple options, weighing them silently. And as the body chose to artificially and prematurely. Take one of those decisions off those people. And it is relevant. Again, when we are. Coming up. Pretty significant budget.
So now.
I don't have comments. Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. Same to you. Owen?
Um, not much. I'm excited about Michelle's chat. I I had the pleasure with. Working with him during my sophomore year with me being there. Um, he's a great guy, so I look forward to indirectly figuring out how he's doing. Um, and then in regards to. Yes, and then um. In regards to the discussion that we've been having more recent. Recently, um. I think. Anyone at this table has the right to believe that. They're right. But I think. At some stage, I don't want to. Figure out our thought exactly when that when that line has been crossed, but we reached. An inflection point as a community where we need to be mindful of. Whether we're doing more than good, looking for. So. That's kind of my thoughts.
Very good. Uh, Joe? I have no comments. Thank you. What?
Um, well, I guess I'll start with. Happy holidays. Yo, happy new year. I hope everyone. Has been enjoying that. Um, that aside, I would like to say, and Georgia, if you could put this down for the record. I could read between the lines about what the fire chief was saying. But as I said, when I made my decision. I looked at what was best for the community as a whole. It wasn't just about what was best for the fire station and the fire department. If he said they could operate out of either location and maintain the services that we already, that the great services they already provide to us. That. Weighed into heavily how I voted. So I. Don't like being accused of being dense. Um, this is not a black and white issue. Um, what's relevant and what's not relevant, and I think sometimes. It gets painted that way, and I think that's unfortunate. Um, because, I mean, just sitting here, for example, I thought about something else that wasn't brought up. Um, because, I mean, just sitting here, for example, I thought about something else that wasn't brought up just now. This location gives us the potential for bathrooms in the park. Which the old location would not have done. Or the, I mean, the, the other location, sorry. And that's a community benefit, so it's not just about dollars, it's about the big picture. It's not just about the fire station or the fire department and the fire service, I mean, it's, it's just not the way the world works, and that's all.
Thank you. Um, does anybody have any, um. Agenda items to add to our growing list? See none, I'll see the motion for adjournment. Moved by Simmons Farrell?
Second.
Second by Hubbard? All those in favor of. Adjournment, see if I'm saying hi, please?
Hi.
Happy new year, everybody. Thanks for a good meeting. Sam, have a safe flight tomorrow. Staff, great, great year.